Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for December 9th, 2014. Our custom prior to calling the meeting officially to order is to present the invocation and the pledge. Today, the invocation will be presented by Reverend Lee Delbridge from Smyrna Christian Church. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our country's flag by Deputy Chris McCollin, who has worked for the Cobb Sheriff's Office for nine and a half years. Majority of his career, he was assigned to the courthouse, but is recently and currently assigned to the detention center. For those who wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Oh, Father in heaven, we thank you for the privilege we have to be here. We ask that you bless this meeting, that you give these leaders the wisdom that they need to do the right thing, and then give them the courage to do that. It is in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend, thank you Deputy. We'll now call this meeting to order. The first tab is Presentations. We begin with the first presentation to present Annual Customer Service Excellence Crew Team Award. County Manager Mr. Hankerson, I believe you're going to lead this, and the board if you'd come down and join Mr. Hankerson in front.
Several years ago, as part of our customer service program in which we present quarterly customer service nominees that eventually move up and be considered for an annual award, we started a crew award because a lot of our employees work in crews. And today, we want to present a crew award to one of our public safety fire stations, the Belfair Road Station. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Christian and I'm gonna let her tell a little bit about our honorees today.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson. Good morning Chairman, Commissioners, and special guests. Several years ago, the Customer Service Council began recognizing employees whose jobs require them to work as part of an established team on an everyday basis. This recognition became known as the Crew Award. The winner of this year's award was nominated by their supervisor for consistently going above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to providing customer service excellence. This morning, we're pleased to give them formal recognition. On behalf of the Customer Service Council, it is a great honor to present the 2014 Crew Award to Fire Station 16, Shift A. Would you please come forward as I call your name? Lieutenant Mike Bell, Engineer Michael Beedenbaugh, Lieutenant James O'Shields, Engineer Jason Hatton, Firefighter II Justin Beldon, Firefighter II Kimberly Bowie, Firefighter II Julian Daniels, Firefighter II Mark Thurmond. This crew operates as a fully functioning firefighting and emergency medical team assigned to Engine and Rescue 16. Like all firefighters, the crew's regular responsibilities include maintaining the frontline engine and rescue equipment assigned to the station, as well as the station itself. This crew has also committed to extra training to maintain the Advanced Life Support, or ALS, station status of the station and units assigned to it. The men and women of this crew go above and beyond what is expected of them on a daily basis, striving to be the best in customer service for those in their community and throughout Cobb County. On the evening of June 8th, Engine 16 was dispatched to an emergency involving a motor vehicle on Interstate 575. Once on scene, the crew found four people sitting on the ground behind the car. After evaluating the situation, the crew learned that while the group was driving down the interstate, someone threw a beer bottle at their vehicle, hitting the driver in the head. The group was on their way to Kennetstone Hospital when their car broke down, and they called 911. The driver was in need of immediate care and was treated by the fire crew until the ambulance arrived. The group had no family or friends to assist them at that moment, so the group discussed walking down the interstate. Knowing this would put the group in more danger, Engine 16 requested assistance from Rescue 16, and they transported the group to a restaurant located at the next exit. Another example of this crew's focus on customer service occurred when a couple traveling through the area stopped by the station and needed assistance finding a place to stay. The crew jumped in and tried to find a shelter for the couple. Unfortunately, due to the late hour, they were unable to locate a place for the couple to stay. Instead of having the couple sleep in the elements, the crew pulled their resources and provided the couple with a room at a local extended stay where the couple could safely remain for the evening. In addition to their daily tasks and responsibilities, this crew works tirelessly in the communities where the station is located and where they live. Whether it is serving as members of Cobb County's Fire and Emergency Services Honor Guard, participating in Hero's Breakfast at elementary schools, visiting classrooms and teaching children about fire safety, raising money for children with cancer, assisting retired firefighters with home repairs, or teaching citizens how to properly install car seats, they always put the needs of others in front of their own needs. As you can see, this team not only exemplifies customer service, they also show what it means to protect and serve Cobb County. Thanks to each of you for your continued service to our communities. You are shining examples for our residents, visitors, and all Cobb County employees to follow. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating our 2014 Crew Award winner.
Let me say again to the crew, thank you for what you do. And also, I think Firefighter O'Shield is the one that nominated this group and apparently told the story well. And you in just doing your job, and I say, thank you for what you do, all part of a hard day's work. But again, thank you for working together as a team. And let's give this group another big round of applause.
Next item is to presentation a check from the County Manager's office to Make-A-Wish Georgia, raised by the 14th Annual Cobb County 5K.
I'm gonna ask John Brennan and Teresa Baath, who is Director of Community, been in new business, and John is the Chief Executive Officer. John Hauser, Beverly Martin, is she still here? Anyone else there? Suzanne? Okay. Another year, another good year. Congratulations. I can tell you, and I'm gonna turn it over to John in a few minutes, and we started out years ago, we used to do motorcycle ride as a fundraiser, and that ran its course, so we had to look to see something that we can do to give back to the community because that is the Cobb way, and giving back to the community. And John approached me about to Make-A-Wish, and this is our 14th year, John, I believe. And since 2001, we have donated $434,144.07, and granted 69 wishes. I think that deserves a round of applause for your leadership. And I enjoy working with you and serving on the committee. And I'm gonna let you say a few words and then make a presentation.
Thank you, sir. And yes, this is our 14th year, and I went to Mr. Hankerson about 15 years ago and asked if we could do this 5K. So he allowed me to do that, and then when I started talking to people in the police department, they said, oh, you don't need to do a 5K, you'll never make any money. So we were able to certainly overcome that, but this is an event that is organized by Cobb County employees. Beverly Martin here is one of my go-to persons, she does a great job. But we couldn't present this check today if it wasn't for sponsors like Mayland Memes, which is our presenting sponsors, and all the sponsors and runners that come out every year for this event. So it's an honor to work with the Make-A-Wish Foundation, they do an outstanding job. It's hard to believe we've done this for 14 years now, but it's an honor to work with you. So, John, you may have a word to say.
Well, first of all, let me say thank you to County Manager David Hankerson, Chief John Hauser, and Beverly Martin. You're the engine behind the event, as well as a lot of hands in the process, I'm sure. It's a wonderful event, $400,000, 69 wishes. It means a lot to our Wish Kids. These are kids that are battling for their lives with life-threatening medical conditions, two and a half to 18 years of age. And it's more than just a nice thing to do, it really transforms them. We've surveyed survivors, kids that are now adults like us, who survived their ordeal, and asked them what the wish experience was like, what did it mean to them? And over 70% said it actually helped save their lives, and over 80% indicated that it helped determine their life's direction. So, you know, the Cobb County people involved with this and the leadership right here really impacts those kids in a real way, in a transformational way when they need it the most. And so we are very, very grateful during this holiday of giving for your generosity or continuing generosity to make dreams come true for our Wish Kids. It means a lot to them and to us. As a Cobb County resident myself, I'm proud to be here standing with Cobb County in the Cobb County Way and supporting such wonderful children right here in Cobb County. So thank you very, very much.
So with that, we'd like to present this check for $28,000 to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Thank you.
Before we leave, that was the ceremonial check. I'm sure you want the real thing there. And also, I'll just say as a little statistic, I believe we the largest government entity fundraiser in the state of Georgia and Alabama, and we want to thank you for giving us that honor. Thank you.
Thank you, good job. Another example of our employees step up for the community outside of their responsibilities. The next item, we'd like to go to item four before we move to item three to allow for someone to get here who's a little bit late. So we're gonna go to item four to recognize Safe America on their 20th anniversary.
Good morning, everyone. It's an honor to recognize Safe America, and I have with me Lynn and Mary Lou Pogano, who really started this baby, and it's a wonderful program that serves all of Georgia. It is located in District 3, right across from Sprayberry High School. So it's an honor for me to present this recognition on 20 years of service to the community. And I'd just like to say, I've been a friend of the Poganos for many, many years, and also Safe America, even before I was a Commissioner. So this is very special recognition today for me. And I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas, starting in 1994 with Operation Baby Buckle, a program that supplied more than 150,000 car seats to underprivileged families, the Safe America Foundation has impacted people of all ages during its first 20 years. Whereas, in 2002, the Foundation's Cobb Safe Communities Program began educating middle and high school students, businesses, senior citizens, and the community about highway safety. Whereas, in 2005, Safe America created the Safe Teen Driving Academy, a one-day event for parents and teens to learn the best safety practices and avoid the riskiest behaviors behind the wheel of a car. And whereas, the nonprofits' road safety programs have reached more than 30,000 teens delivering the message of safe driving in Georgia and nationally. Whereas, in addition to improving the safety of drivers in Cobb County and the broader metropolitan Atlanta region, the Foundation's leadership extends into four areas: road safety, national preparedness, youth safety, and veterans transitional assistance. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby thank and salute Safe America for its tireless work educating and helping both Georgians and all Americans be prepared, not scared, and congratulate the Cobb-based institution on its 20th anniversary. This the 8th day of December 2014. Thank you. Would you all like to say a few words?
Well, I'd just say to you, Joanne in particular, but also to all of the Commissioners and Chairman Lee, who we've also been good friends with over the years, Chairman and Commissioner Ott, we appreciate the opportunity to be recognized. Our whole focus has been to protect people, and we are most proud that we start right here in Cobb County. And as we've worked across the country, really, in recent days, even talking to the White House about how we can assist their efforts on dealing with Ebola and the ongoing crisis of Americans who are overseas who need to come home and get treatment, we've been really proud that when people ask us where we're from, we say Cobb County. And it's been a valuable experience for us, lifelong opportunity to serve, and I know Mary Lou feels the same way.
It really has been a privilege to serve the residents of Cobb County, starting with teenagers all the way up to senior citizens. So thanks to all of you, thanks, Joanne.
Thank you, and thanks for the job you do.
Well, now move to item number three, and that's for the Cobb County Water System awards to be accepted from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, the EPA, Georgia EPA, and Georgia Fast Oil and Grease Alliance. Mr. McCollin, Commissioner Burl.
Before we give a little background in history, I would like to say that, first of all, I am the Liaison Commissioner for the water system, and for the last two years, I've been working very closely with our Director Steve McCullers and his staff. And they never, they just keep amazing me with all the awards and the work that they do. So you'll hear a little bit more about specifics, but these guys are the cream of the crop, and they do a great job day in and day out, and we are here to recognize this work today.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to introduce to everyone Pam Burnett, the new Executive Director of the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, who's here this morning to formally recognize the recipients. I would note that she was stuck in traffic, but it was not within Cobb County. 285, it's an issue. So, without further ado, Pam?
I'm going to count on my yoga breath here and take a deep breath. I just got out of the car, so, phew, that was quite a trip this morning, but I'm so glad to be here. Yes, I'm the new Executive Director of Georgia Association of Water Professionals, and for those of you who don't know what that is, we have more than 4,000 members, and we are statewide organization of water, wastewater, stormwater, all things water-related, and we have a tremendous awards program. And one of the things that I wanted to just echo what you said, Commissioner, about the awards, they're very important because they not only, these are, these are an opportunity to look inside other systems by our members. So these people who are coming to inspect the Cobb County water system are peers and experts that take a very critical look at what folks are doing, and there's lots of, lots of great learning that takes place from there, and this is a system that is just top-notch, so I'm very, very happy to be here. So let me talk about 11 awards that we have today, there's lots of prizes in the box. So first one, United States Environmental Protection Agency WaterSense Large Utility Promotional Partner EPA. I would like Kathy Nguyen to talk about, introduce her staff first.
Hi. So I'm Kathy Nguyen, and I have the pleasure of heading up the water efficiency program for Cobb County, and everybody at Water already knows this, but we get a lot of credit, but most of the work is done by these two ladies. This is Candace Crawford, who is our administrative support and one of our educators, and this is Amy Warnock, and she heads up our youth education program. The only other thing we have to say is, we're blessed to be in Cobb County because we, this award is not for the water efficiency program, it is for Cobb County. It's for the citizens that have taken hold of the water efficiency, and that has come from the leadership, the support of the Commissioners, the County Manager, and the support we get at the water system with Mr. McCullers. So we share this with all of you, thank you.
Okay. That's great. The next four awards are under the direction, are in the division that Ken Jacob Operations Manager leads. These are really important awards. These are for the plants that are operated here. First, I want to tell you about the Gold Award. This is the award for meeting 100% compliance of the permit limits, and this is for the RL Sutton Plant, which Stefan Reniek is the Superintendent. Stefan, thank you. I want to go ahead and present the Gold Award to you. This is very, very important, 100% compliance. This is a tough award to get. That means no violations of your permit limits for a full year. And that, the next award is our Platinum Award, and this is for the Northwest Plant, and Bob Herbig is the Superintendent of that plant. I want to tell you about the Platinum Award. The Platinum Award is something you get after five full years of compliance with your permit, and I think this plant, this plant has actually 13 years consecutive compliance. That's remarkable. Thank you. The next is the Platinum Award for the Noonday Plant, Guy Gray Superintendent. And the Noonday Plant has nine years of consecutive compliance. Yeah. Okay. The next one is the South Cobb Plant, John Schuman Superintendent. South Cobb has six years at the Platinum level. So those are remarkable awards. Again, there are hundreds of opportunities, hundreds of water samples that are taken, and every one of those is an opportunity to miss that award. So you can imagine with that kind of track record how important that is. That is tremendous service to Cobb County. Okay. We have this one is, okay, the, I'm sorry. Okay, so now we're gonna go to the Wastewater Collections Award. This is also a Gold Award. This is actually a scoring system, and it's on a score of 1 to 100, and this is a very tough award to meet as well. This is for all of your sewer systems in the city, in the county. This award goes to Timothy Vaughn, who's the Systems Maintenance Manager. Timothy, you, this system received a score of 99.3 on a scale of 1 to 100. That's remarkable. Oh, I'm sorry, I also wanted to mention Brian Clark, who's the Maintenance Manager, and Don Machado, Technical Support. Are you here? Thank you, guys. Thank you. Under the South Cobb. Okay. Now we're gonna move to the Laboratory Quality Assurance Award. Okay, Alicia, are you here? There you are. Alicia Giddens? She's the Laboratory Superintendent. Did you want to introduce any of your staff?
Good morning. I just wanted to take a moment and recognize my staff who came here to support me, and who, without their everyday efforts, this award is not possible for Cobb County. So Roberta Smith, Eric Johnson, Israel Bar Yeshua, could you please stand? Thank you. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And again, I wanted just to mention, these are people who have others looking inside their facility. That's a tough thing, going through hundreds of pages of documents and watching what they do. So that is tremendous service, again. Okay, we are now going to talk about the Public Education Award. We have the GAWP Public Education Media Award for the Thaw Wag Newsletter for Jennifer McCoy. And I also wanted to mention Michael Cale, who's the New Trainer of the Year for the Georgia Adopt a Dream Program. Thank you very much. Stick around, Jennifer. Also, Georgia EPD offered the award for the 2014 Watershed Award. Jennifer, if you could accept that. Beautiful. Thank you.
And I might add, Jennifer and I go way back from my Keep Cobb Beautiful days with these great programs, as well as Kathy Nguyen. They're phenomenal, and year after year, this continues. So we look forward to next year.
Jennifers, stick around. Georgia EPD's 2014 Rivers Alive Waterway Cleanup Award. It's great.
I should know, this one was won in cooperation with Keep Cobb Beautiful, and our Parks Department, the Natural Resource Unit, helped us put together a wonderful fall cleanup that we were recognized last year for. Thank you.
One more. This is for the Georgia Fast Oil and Grease Alliance, also known as FOG, for their 2013 Program of the Year Award, Jamie Stones, who's our Cobb County FOG Program Manager. Jamie, that was great. Wanted to thank you all. I do, again, want to say, we're from, GAWP is a statewide organization, so every system competes with Cobb County, so you can imagine what an accomplishment this is for this water system. Thank you, Commissioners, for your leadership, and Managers, for your support, and thank you for being participants in GAWP. This means a lot to us, too. Thank you.
If I may, I just wanted to introduce one other individual whose name wasn't mentioned. He is the retiring manager of our Water Protection Division, Walt Casica. Walt, would you please stand? Thank you, sir.
Before we go to tab two, I have an announcement to make, and it is simply this, that I am providing notice of an intent to rescind at the next Board of Commissioners meeting the action taken regarding Agenda Item Number 24 to amend the program year 2006, 2007, 2008, and 2009 annual action plans to reallocate unexpected home investment partnership funds to Must Industries. No actions have been taken a result of the vote at the prior meeting. It was the next morning after that vote of Tuesday, that Wednesday following, that the County Attorney and I spoke, when I realized that since this was a single item award, that it probably would have been in the best interest, might, should have recused myself from the vote due to the fact that my wife is an employee of Must, although the funds that were allocated are 100% pass-through to pay for rent for homeless people, probably would have been in the best interest to do that. So I just want to make that announcement. And before we go further into tab number two, I wanted to talk on the issues under tab nine. Under tab nine is a community development hearing, a show cause hearing for determining if due cause exists to suspend or revoke the Cobb County Occupation Tax Certificate and Alcohol Beverage License for a business doing, or company doing business as Enigma. We've had some developments recently, this morning, and Counselor, if you could brief us on those items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With a recommendation for next steps, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Madam County Attorney. For the benefit of the licensee, I am Sam Hensley Jr., the attorney for the Cobb County Business License Division. And as you know from your agenda packet, this was to be a show cause hearing today on a number of violations alleged against Enigma under the Cobb County Alcohol Code, as well as the Business License Code. I have been in discussion with the attorneys for Enigma. We have Ms. Bethany White, who's here today from Johnson and Freeman, representing their client, Mr. Hip Nguyen, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, I hope so. And I also spoke by phone with Mr. Ron Freeman, who is the senior partner there at their attorney's office that they have retained to represent them in this matter. And actually, Mr. Freeman is a municipal court judge in Riverdale and is sitting on the bench this morning, so we had a conflict about going forward with the hearing today. So... So, I inform Mr. Freeman that I certainly have no objection to them being represented by counsel. I think that's a very good idea, certainly in a case of this nature. I was a bit concerned that the licensee waited until the day before the hearing to do so. We were not informed of this development until 5:00 yesterday when we received a call from the attorneys that they had been retained to represent Enigma in this matter. Nonetheless, they have requested a continuance of this hearing. Due to the nature of the allegations in regard to this establishment, I have agreed to not oppose that motion, subject to the conditions that they not be allowed to operate. As you know, Mr. Chairman, they are under suspension with their business license as of the notice that was given by the Business License Division Manager, which she is entitled to do under Code 7845, Section 7845 of our code, pending a hearing by this board, which is what we were here to do today. So, their business license is under suspension. The conditions would be that they not be allowed to operate until such time as we can reconvene this hearing on the mutually agreed-upon continuance date. That they have requested to be allowed to go forward with a couple of nonprofit fundraising events that were previously scheduled at this establishment that would be held during the daytime. There would be no alcohol served. And I have agreed to recommend that in principle, subject to the licensee presenting a formal presentation, documentation, a calendar of events, so to speak, about when these events would occur and that they recognize the conditions that are... would be imposed. And that is, no alcohol would be served. These would be allowed only during daytime hours. And any other conditions that the board might deem prudent to impose on that. But the Business License Division and the Cobb County Police Department Regulatory Services and Permits Unit would need to approve those events as well. And if they did so, then the licensee would be allowed to go forward with those events, and those events only during the pendency of this hearing. So, that essentially is the status of our negotiations, Mr. Chairman. What I would like to do then is, unless Ms. White... Bethany White is here, as I said, representing her client, has any comment she'd like to make in regard to this, then I can make a motion to that effect or recommend a motion to the board that it be made. And I'll formalize that in a moment. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Ms. White?
Ms. White, I would, though. Counselor, I'd appreciate if you would come forward. And for the record, just indicate that you understood what was just presented and then concur with the recommendations he's about to make.
Good morning, Council. My name is Bethany White with Johnson and Freeman, LLC. Here on behalf of Enigma. And yes, everything that Mr. Hensley presented to you all is agreeable to us. It's negotiations that we have been making this morning. And if you all will allow us to go forward as such, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. White. Appreciate your time. Mr. Hensley.
I might mention, Mr. Chairman, that Ms. White is a new member of the bar.
Welcome aboard.
Recently passed the bar and is a new attorney with us.
Congratulations.
This is her first appearance before a local governing authority of any kind. So, we've kind of thrown her in the fire on this one.
We're honored to have you, ma'am.
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend this board make a motion and pass or take a vote on the recommendation that we continue this hearing. We would need to continue it until the February 10th, I believe, is the February daytime meeting of this board because the January 13th meeting, that date, my primary witness Sergeant Bonnie Smith will be taking an exam, I believe, a captain's exam or some such exam with the police department. It will not be available. So, we will need to put this into February. And that Enigma will not be allowed to operate during the pendency of this hearing, subject to the conditions that they will be allowed to hold these previously scheduled nonprofit fundraising events during daytime hours only, with no alcohol to be served, subject to the approval by the Business License Division and the Cobb County Regulatory Services and Permits Unit of the Police Department upon presentation of a formal proposal for those events that are to be held at their establishment and any other conditions that the board may deem appropriate to impose on that.
Thank you, Counselor. And you have any comment? Commissioner, I... This is your district. Would you lead our conversation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine to make a motion like Ms. Hensley did. The only thing I would add is, besides no alcohol being served, no alcohol to be brought on the premises by any outside parties. Everything else remains the same as your motion.
I'll second that motion. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments from the board? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. And I believe we can release the people that were here in part of tab nine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Who wants this?
Please add your entry of appearance.
Thank you very much. That will now take us to tab two. Ms. White, thank you very much. Tab two, Cobb County Water System, there's three items. Mr. McCullers? Item one, please.
Good morning again, sir. We request that you hold three public hearings, or public hearings on three projects where design services may exceed $100,000. First of these is the FY16 Northeast Cobb Miscellaneous Water Main Replacement. That's named FY16 because we expect to do the design in FY15 and the construction will actually take place in FY16.
Thank you. At this moment, we'll open up the public hearing for Agenda Item Number One, where the Board of Commissioners conduct a pivotal hearing with employment of consultant services where contract fees... Contract fees will likely exceed $100,000. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against item number one? Seeing a hearing, none, the public hearing is closed. Item two, please.
Second project is FY16 Northwest Cobb Miscellaneous Water Main Repair Design.
Thank you. We'll now open a public hearing for Agenda Item Number Two. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against item number two? Seeing a hearing, none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. McCullers. Item three, please.
And finally, the FY16 South Cobb Miscellaneous Water Main Replacement Project.
Thank you. We'll now open up a public hearing for item number three. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three? Seeing a hearing, none, the public hearing is closed. We appreciate your time, Mr. McCullers. That takes us to tab three, public comment?
No comment.
Thank you. That takes us to tab four, Consent Agenda. Are there any comments for this consent agenda before we bring forward a motion? In that regard, I'll bring forward a motion to prove the consent agenda is revised and authorized execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Is a second, any comment? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. That takes us to tab five, Transportation Commissioner... Director... DeMassimo, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, and County Manager, our first item is to approve a contract with Georgia Development Partners, LLC for drainage improvements on North Hattaway Road. This is an approved project in the Drainage System Improvements Component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Georgia Development Partners, LLC in an amount not to exceed $455,814.86 for drainage system improvements on North Hattaway Road.
Commissioner Gorman?
So moved.
Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Item two, please.
To approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company for roadway safety and operational improvements on Pine Mountain Road. This is an approved roadway safety and operational improvements project in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company in an amount not to exceed $3,912,440.40 for roadway safety and operational improvements on Pine Mountain Road.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes, I just want to state that we're partnering with the City of Kennesaw on this project. And it's a well-needed project. Motion to approve.
Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Item three, please.
To approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Pinnacle International for Construction of Little Willio Road Sidewalk Phase One. This is an approved project in the sidewalks component of the 2005 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. And we request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Pinnacle International with a savings to the project in the amount of $97,865.25 for construction of Little Willio Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner, I...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item four, please.
To approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for Drainage System Repairs on Independence Way. This is an approved drainage system improvement in the approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. And we request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $3,860.50 for drainage system repairs on Independence Way.
Thank you. Commissioner, I...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Item five, please.
To adopt an authorizing resolution regarding pedestrian streetscape lighting and approve a local government lighting project agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway. The project is currently being constructed by the Georgia Department of Transportation and consists of widening Cobb Parkway from Paces Mill to Acres Mill to a six-lane median divided facility with a 10-foot-wide multi-use sidewalk on the west side of the roadway. This section of Cobb Parkway is located within the Cumberland Community Improvement District. The department is in receipt of a local government lighting project agreement from GDOT, which outlines the responsibilities of each party for the installation, operation, and maintenance of pedestrian and streetscape lighting to be installed as part of the project. And we request the Board of Commissioners adopt an authorizing resolution regarding pedestrian streetscape lighting and approve a local government lighting project agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway.
Thank you. Commissioner, I...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Next item, please.
To approve an indication of lighting support document with the Georgia Department of Transportation for I-75 at Wade-Green Road Interchange. This is an approved project in the thoroughfare improvements component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. And we request the Board of Commissioners approve an indication of lighting support document with the Georgia Department of Transportation for I-75 at Wade-Green Road Interchange.
Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Director DeMassimo, can you give us a timeline for the design and when the construction will start?
This project is going to be a design-build. And right now, Commissioner, we can update you on the schedule, but there is a... Because of the funding situation right now that exists at the state and federal level, we may have a bit of a delay on the schedule for this project, but it is moving forward. So, we'll get you an updated schedule for it.
Okay. In 2016, this will move to District One. And Commissioner Mike Weatherford is here, so I hope he's listening. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item seven, please.
To adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program Application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for additional operational funding for SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway at Mac Dobb's Road, Rutledge Road. The department has received a quick-response project request from the Georgia Department of Transportation to add an exclusive left turn lane, a through lane, and a right turn lane on Mac Dobb's Road at the intersection of SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway, utilizing operational funding assistance available through the fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, program. In order to receive the L-MIG funding, Cobb County is required to complete an application that includes a project description and estimated total project cost. We request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, program application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for additional operational funding for SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway at Mac Dobb's Road, Rutledge Road.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes, this agenda item and the next agenda item are projects that have been shared by the community as being major safety issues. And these two projects are fine examples of how we can leverage SPOS dollars and get grants from the state to share in the cost of some much-needed safety and operational improvements. And I'm very excited to see these taking place at this point. But my motion will be for Agenda Item Only Number Seven at this point. Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item eight.
To adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program Application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for additional operational funding for SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway at Watts Drive, Pine Mountain Court. The department has received a quick-response project request from the Georgia Department of Transportation to add an exclusive left turn lane, a through lane, and a right turn lane on Pine Mountain Court at the intersection of SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway, utilizing operational funding assistance available through the fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, program. In order to receive the L-MIG funding, Cobb County is required to complete an application that includes a project description and estimated total project cost. We request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, program application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for additional operational funding for SR3 US-41 Cobb Parkway at Watts Drive, Pine Mountain Court.
Commissioner Gorman?
So moved.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item nine, please.
To ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency roadway repairs on Shadow Ridge Drive and to approve project number E-2530-WO-07 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises for said repairs. This is an approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency roadway repairs on Shadow Ridge Drive. Approve project number E-2530-WO-07 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises in an amount not to exceed $24,922 for said repairs.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes. A motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Next item, please.
To approve a contract with Lew Allen Construction Company for construction of Mayberry Road Shoulder Improvements. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Lew Allen Construction Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $289,701 for construction of Mayberry Road Shoulder Improvements.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. As you're aware, in October, at our October 14th meeting, we approved this item. And we've gone through the process with the bidding, RFP process, bidding process. And Lew Allen Construction is our most responsive and lowest bid. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the safety barrier on Mayberry Road.
Is a second? Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 3-2. Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Gorman, opposition. Item 11, please.
To approve project number D-5070-TO-01 to the 2014 Master Task Order Contract with URS Corporation for Traffic Engineering Services for Traffic Signal Timing. This is an approved project in the Traffic Management, Traffic Signal Timing, and Planning Component of the 2005 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. The department's adaptive traffic control system requires routine re-timing to optimize traffic signal operation and improve traffic flow. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number D-5070-TO-01 to the 2014 Master Task Order Contract with URS Corporation in an amount not to exceed $89,050 for Traffic Engineering Services for Traffic Signal Timing.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 12, please.
To approve project number E-5010-TO-02 to the 2014 Master Task Order Contract with URS Corporation for Traffic Engineering Services for Advanced Transportation Management Systems. This is an approved project in the Traffic Management, Traffic Signal Timing, and Planning Component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. The department's ATMS includes a regional transportation management center and intelligent transportation systems, incorporating traffic signal systems, closed-circuit television cameras cameras for traffic surveillance, fiber-optic cable systems, and traveler information systems. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve project number E-5010-TO number oh two to the 2014 Master Task Order Contract with URS Corporation in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for traffic engineering services for advanced transportation management systems.
Commissioners, so moved. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Commissioners. Great job. Tab six. Public Services.
Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Tom.
Yes, hi. Morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Mr. Haxson, we have one item this morning for Parks.
Name and title for the record, please.
I'm Tom Bills, Senior Project Manager with Parks Department.
Thank you.
I'm your director this morning.
Thank you, Tom.
We have one item this morning, and I'd like to welcome Vicki Morland and Russell Small from Moren d'Altobelli are with us this morning. The item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve work authorization number three under the contract with Moren d'Altobelli Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one million two hundred ninety thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and four cents to continue to provide program management assistance, pre-construction services, and construction management for the 2011 Parks SPOS Program, authorize of corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the documents.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward. Well, actually, I'm going to send this one over to Commissioner Gorm, who heads up Parks or Executory Fair.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'd be delighted to make a motion to approve this agenda item.
I'll second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Tab seven is Public Safety. We have one item. Director Heaton.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Coming to you today to ask the Board to authorize the purchase of one heavy-duty commercial truck for hazmat or hazardous material support response apparatus fire station number twenty-two in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and authorize the related appropriation of funds for this purpose. I would like to say that this is the final purchased with the 2011 SPOS for public safety, and I'd like to say thank you for your support and the support of the citizens. Without that SPOS, the Fire Department wouldn't be in the shape it is today as far as apparatus replacement goes, as well as some of the replacement of the communication system and patrol rifles. But it is the final one for public safety.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burrow, would you lead our conversation?
Yes. Very much needed, and I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Any comment? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Director. This takes us to tab nine as tab eight has been put off until our... No, I take that back. Tab eight is not the one that been put off. Tab eight, Community Development. Director Hosak.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
One item.
Rob Hosak, Cobb County Community Development. Our first agenda item this morning is to request that the Board authorize community development staff to revise the other business application. The revision, Mr. Chairman, would entail requiring that applicants notify property owners within a thousand feet similar to the requirement for the original filing of the zoning application. I believe this particular... The purpose of this amendment is to basically provide that same notification to property owners within a thousand feet that they were provided at the time of the original rezoning in the event that there's an amendment proposed or a stipulation change, site plan change proposed as part of that zoning and its stipulations. I did want to report to the Board, per the Board's direction yesterday morning, we did provide a notice to the normal email distribution list that we send proposed code amendments to. We received a number of comments, mostly positive in that folks thought it was a good idea. We did have one response asking whether or not this would apply to variances. We answered that it would not apply to variance applications. We also had one phone call asking if we had an idea on what it might cost as far as a certified mailing certificate, which is the way we normally have an applicant demonstrate that they've complied with the mailing requirement for a zoning. The way we answered that question, Mr. Chairman, was it really is going to depend where the particular application is at. For instance, if it were in District One, in an area that may have larger lots, it's probably not going to be but fifteen, twenty dollars because of the size of the lot and the less number of parcels as opposed to if it were in Commission District Two, perhaps down in the Cumberland area where there are numerous parcels that could be a little bit more expensive in that within that thousand feet, there may be more letters that would have to be mailed out. So we did provide a range of what we thought the cost would be to the caller, and that pretty much completed the summary of the public comments that we received, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. With that, I'll make a... Commissioner Burrow, will you make a motion on this item?
I will. I'd like to make a motion to approve, and I'd like to thank Mr. Hosak and his staff for working with us to develop the language, and I just feel it's important that this be on the applications for other business because sometimes when... It's a number of years when something comes back under other business from the original zoning, and the surrounding neighbors or within the thousand feet may have changed, and this will give them proper notification. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Make the motion to approve as presented. I'll second that motion, or you've already seconded that, right?
Yes.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So as item nine has been postponed to our February hearing, which takes us to tab ten. There's no speakers. Takes us to tab eleven. I bring forward one motion that the Board of Commissioners approve the following appointments, reappointments to Workforce Investment Board. Appoint Billy Izard for three-year terms to expire June twentieth... Or June thirtieth, twenty-seventeenth. Appoint Elizabeth Scott for three-year terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty-seventeenth. Latoya Brooks for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-seventeenth, and Mark Gibson for four-year terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty-eighteenth.
Does not require a vote.
Does not require a vote. That is a discussion period as outlined in the rules associated with that. Before we go to tab twelve, which is Public Address, I must leave the meeting, so Commissioner Ott, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, I guess we'll start on my left. Commissioner Gorm, any comments? Commissioner Cupid?
No comment.
I know you have comments.
Of course. I'll try to be brief. I just want to say thank you to, first of all, to Burger King at forty-two eighty-five Bills Ferry Road for inviting me to take part in their ribbon cutting. They've remodeled and are open for business again, and it was great to see a new business and a new look and also have a delicious lunch. And a big thank you to Walton High School, Dr. Camp, Sharon Camp, and Kathy Nguyen of the Water Department for having me watch the presentations from the Water Smart Competition. The students are in the AP Environmental Program and presented their class projects. They did a project with the water runoff and system at the New Braves Stadium, and it was very impressive to see these high school students and the ideas and the projects that they did. So I very much enjoyed the presentations from Dr. Camp's classes and water system partnership. This afternoon, from three to seven, the Braves and Cobb County's Public Safety, DOT, and Community Development Departments will have displays set up in this room to allow the public a greater understanding of where we are in preparing for the opening of SunTrust Park. It's an open house. There'll be stations set up, so there's no formal presentation, but you can come and learn, and it's tonight, today, from three to seven here in this room. And that's all I have. That's all I have.
Okay. I just have two announcements for county staff. Tomorrow, between two and five, over at Powder Spring Station, will be a farewell reception for Commissioner Gorm and Annette, so I know that they would welcome and be happy to see all of you. Also, and Bob, you're going to tell me the time, but on December eighteenth, Commissioner Lake Weatherford will have his official swearing-in. What time?
Four p.m.
Four p.m. in this room.
Seventeen.
On the seventeenth. Okay. In this room. And that's all, Mr. County Manager? Okay, we are adjourned.